We're just gonna wait a minute as we get. Good morning. Thanks for being here, everyone, and thanks for your patience as we get organized. We have five honorary resolutions at the beginning of our meeting today to honor special people and community members, so that's where we're going to begin. I'm Lisa Bender. I'm the president of the Minneapolis City Council. And today, we're going to begin with an honorary resolution for Becky McIntosh, who's retiring from many years at the city of Minneapolis. And I'm gonna turn it over to Cam Gordon to bring forward the resolution. I think we have this.
Thank you very much.
I probably want Becky to join us.
I'd like Becky to join us, and let's have our health commissioner, Gretchen Musican, come up here as well. Well, certainly is my honor and my pleasure to be here to help present this resolution to you. Becky's been at City Hall as long as I have, longer, but you were here when I got here, and you were enormously helpful. You're like a rock, a steady, grounded person who helps a lot of times. And I think sometimes it's a challenge, because the Health Department tends to have a lot of people who are a little bit flighty and big ideas all over the place. And then they come to you and say, "How are we actually gonna pay for this and do this?" Can we really do that, Becky? And you were there to guide us. So I'm a little worried about what we're gonna do once you're gone. But I'm enormously grateful to you and to your family for sharing you with the city this long, and delighted to be here to honor you. I know that Gretchen wants to say a few words, and then we have other council members who want to speak too, so maybe we'll let you speak next.
Picking up maybe on what you said, Becky's been variously described as the Energizer Bunny, the institutional memory, and really a rock-solid linchpin of our core public health infrastructure. And while she's retiring, she's gonna continue to be a Minneapolis resident, which she tells us regularly, and so we'll be expecting us to do a good job on behalf of her, her family, and the rest of the city. She has really, as you said, because of the relationship she has and her deep knowledge, helped the department do all kinds of creative and innovative things that would be really hard to do without the knowledge that she brings. And I'm very grateful for the way that she has handled her transition to retirement with an eye towards helping us succeed as a department, and so that we can continue to serve the city. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Philip Cunningham, and I'm the chair of the Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights and Engagement Committee. And I have, over the past five or so months now as a council member and as the chair, gotten the good fortune of being able to work with Becky. And each council cycle, we have them every two weeks, we get to have a meeting where all of the various folks from across those departments that report to my committee come together, and they get to tell me what we're gonna focus on. But I get to use that time also to tell them how awesome they are and how much I appreciate them. And I often give lots of love to Becky, because it is, the work that she has carried is the unsexy work of government. It's the administrative stuff. It is helping to find the dollars. It's the one who says no. Right? Like, that's the unfair, that's the unfun part about the job. But she really has been the underlying steady, stable force in the Health Department. And so, we have someone here. She's helping to transition that person. And I told her the other day, I was like, "You have some really big shoes to fill." Thank you so much. Our Public Health Department is setting the standard, and thanks to you for really helping make that possible. So, and now I pass it over to your council member.
Hi, everybody. My name is Jeremy Schrader. I am the council member for Ward 11, and I'm lucky enough to have Becky live in my area. And I just want to share that besides all the amazing work that Becky's done for the city, she does that in her own community. You'd think she'd take some time off when she goes home, but she's an active part of the neighborhood board, and I very much believe that you'll continue to be involved and hold us all accountable to that. And with that, I'm gonna present you with our resolution. Honoring Becky McIntosh for her service to the city of Minneapolis, whereas Becky McIntosh, Director of Administration at the Minneapolis Health Department, is retiring on May 31st, 2018, and whereas she has faithfully served the city, the Health Department, and its residents for over 23 years, providing invaluable leadership to the department overseeing emergency preparedness and the administration and assurance functions and national public health accreditation with grace and calm, and whereas she has patiently mentored many city staff and future public health workforce, worked effortlessly across the enterprise and with many stakeholders, and kept the city public health infrastructure strong, and whereas she has devoted her career to improving community health, especially for those most at risk and vulnerable. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the mayor and the city council do hereby, on behalf of the citizens of Minneapolis, honor and thank Becky McIntosh for her years of dedication to the city of Minneapolis, its Health Department, and its residents. Thank you so much.
We're gonna make Becky say a few short words.
Thank you very much. As somebody who is behind the scenes, this is a little bit hard to stand up here, but very much appreciated. I work for an incredible department with everybody who is dedicated and passionate, and it has just been a pleasure. And with working with the council, it's an amazing city, and I am proud to continue to live in the city and will still be a voice. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Becky. Thank you so much. Okay, our second resolution is to designate May 20th, 2018, as Day of the Transgender Child, and we'll have council members Cunningham and Jenkins lead us through this resolution.
Hello again, everyone. It's been a long time. No, while we have Council Vice President Jenkins coming down, I just wanted to take a moment to have Transforming Families, if we have folks here from Transforming Families here, if you could go ahead and come on up. If you identify as a young person who is transgender, transgender, gender nonconforming, non-binary, please come on up. If you consider yourself a young person who is an ally, come on up. If you are a person in the crowd who identifies as a transgender, nonconforming, non-binary ally, please raise your hand. Thank you, everybody. Raise your hand. So I'm gonna hand it over to Council Vice President Jenkins.
Wow, thank you, Councilmember Cunningham. This is such an amazing honor to be able to really lift up transforming families and transgender children throughout our community, but throughout the world. You guys are changing what gender means in our culture and society, and I think that that is awesome. And it is even more amazing that families and parents and grandparents and aunts and uncles are there to support you guys on your journey. And so, the resolution reads, recognizing May 20th, 2018, as the Day of the Transgender Child in the city of Minneapolis. Whereas, 3% of Minnesota teens identify as transgender or gender nonconforming, and whereas the city of Minneapolis has a long history of leading the state and the entire country in creating a community in which transgender and gender non-binary individuals can thrive. And whereas, in 1975, Minneapolis was the first city to pass protections by ordinance barring discrimination in employment, labor union membership, housing, and public accommodations, and whereas the families, guardians, and various transgender support groups throughout Minneapolis provide much-needed love, support, and care for our transgender and gender non-binary youth. And whereas historical trauma and the current political climate can prevent positive development and emotional well-being, leaving our transgender and gender nonconforming children to feel they are not heard, seen, or valued. And...
Whereas... Whereas, the city of Minneapolis Transgender Issues Work Group was established in 2014 to look at issues facing this community, and whereas the Transgender Equity Council was established in 2017 to advise the mayor and city council on matters of importance to the transgender community, and where, oh, this part's always awkward to read. Would you read this one here?
Oh, yeah, I would be happy to read this one. And whereas, the residents of Minneapolis elected the first two black transgender council members in 2018. Bringing in a new era of hope, promise, and diverse leadership that serves as a beacon of progress and inspiration to every trans child in our state and our nation. And...
Gets a little awkward. And whereas, our city has an obligation to protect all children and their right to live, thrive, and exist as who they are, and not who they are told to be as they conform. And whereas, the city of Minneapolis seeks to create a better world for transgender and gender non-binary youth and their families with a dedication to action through inclusive, equitable policymaking. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the mayor and city council do hereby declare and recognize May 20th, 2018, as the Day of the Transgender Child in the city of Minneapolis. And so, and so what I would like to do is I'm gonna go ahead and hand it here to folks from Transforming Families. But I want all the young folks to come around. We're gonna, we're gonna gather around the resolution and take some photos. So, come on, come on.
While, while all of this is taking place, these beautiful photos, I'm gonna read a poem that speaks to the transgender experience, and it's called "Erequiem for the Queers: Or Why We Wear the Color Purple." "We wear purple because all queens deserve a royal crown, because it speaks volumes to those who claim they are colorblind, and it connects us to an ancient cultural legacy. We wear purple because Marsha P. Johnson and Sylvia Rivera, two stars, street transvestite action revolutionaries, wore purple when they marched at Stonewall. We wear purple for all the queers who died on June 24th, 1973, in New Orleans, when a bigoted homophobe sprayed Ronsonol lighter fluid on the stairs and tossed a match, and the ensuing flames traveled to the upstairs lounge, killing 32 people 44 years ago, just four years after Stonewall. We wear purple for all the queer and questioning youth that will sleep under a bridge or trade sex for a place to stay tonight. We wear purple for the indigenous Two-Spirit people representing our struggle on the daily. We wear purple because radical women of color feminism shapes our mindset and thought process, offering critical resistance to the prison, industrial complex, male patriarchy, and religious subjugation. We wear purple because we have to rewrite the narrative of what is and who is a woman. We wear purple because the intersections of race, class, gender, and sexuality is the street we live on, and we can't move even if we wanted to. We have to act against what is considered normal. All of y'all can go and get married now, but I can't even vote, because my ID does not quite match up to the person standing in the ballot box. All of y'all can go and get married now, but I still have to suffer a urinary tract infection, because I can't go to the bathroom in some public spaces. All of y'all can go and get married now, but C.C. McDonald was locked up in the men's prison at St. Cloud Correctional Facility for standing her ground against racist, transphobic, and homophobic attacks, while George Zimmerman, who murdered Trayvon Martin, is still walking around a free man with his gun in his waistband. All of y'all can go and get married now, and believe me, I am truly happy. It means that we have moved a little closer to a more just, more righteous society, but we still have a long way to go. The personal is political. We wear purple for Ms. Major and the Transgender Intersex Justice Project, my homegirl from Chicago, who marched at Stonewall too, and is still putting in revolutionary work for the trans brothers and trans sisters on lockdown. We wear purple for Leslie Feinberg and Kate Bornstein, two transgender warriors. We will never forget what they taught us about, who we are and what we are, and how beauty is our birthright too. I wear purple for my people, my beautiful transgender people. And what if love was the most powerful word in the ethos? Love, 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 love. And what if my transgender people were the embodiment of that love, representing everything and nothing? We wear purple because Elton John sang, "And you can tell everybody this is your song. I know it might seem simple, but now that it's done, I hope you don't mind, I hope you don't mind if I put down in the words how wonderful life is when trans kids are in the world." Congratulations, everybody.
Thank you so much, these amazing young leaders. Okay, number three. We are going to stick with councilmembers Jenkins and Cunningham, and this is a resolution designating June 2018 as Pride Month.
Wow, this is warm up here. Is Dot Belster and Felix Foster here? And anyone else who would like to join? In fact, how many people here are allies to the LGBTQIA community? Yes, awesome. Well...
Really quick, if you are a city employee and identify as LGBTQIA, we would love to have you join us up here as well. Just wanted to throw that out there.
Awesome. Well, this is a resolution of the mayor and city council declaring June 18th lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and asexual Pride Month. That is a long title. Whereas, in 1975, Minneapolis was the first city in the state of Minnesota to prohibit discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation and gender identity expression, a position subsequently adopted by numerous Minnesota cities and the state itself. And whereas, Minneapolis was the first city in the state of Minnesota to adopt an ordinance creating a domestic partnership registry. And whereas, the city of Minneapolis has been steadfast in its commitment to full legal equality for same-sex couples, and in particular, to end the exclusion of same-sex couples from marriage, as well as a public and vocal proponent of marriage equality statute passed in 2013 by the state, by the Minnesota State Legislature and signed by the governor. And whereas, the Minneapolis City Council, in partnership with the Minneapolis School District, our legislative delegation, and numerous advocacy organizations, has long advocated for the 2014 passage of the Safe and Supportive Minnesota Schools Act. I think that deserves a round of applause for our young people. Providing a clear definition of bullying and focused on bullying prevention. And whereas, the city of Minneapolis Transgender Issues Work Group was established in 2014 and has hosted the annual Minneapolis Trans Equity Summit since 2014 to support and continue to raise awareness of the social, legal, health, employment, and other issues critical to the transgender community. And...
Whereas, in February of 2017, the city council approved the creation of the Transgender Equity Council as an advisory board to the city and Minneapolis Parks and Recreation Board on matters of importance to the transgender community. And whereas, Minneapolis has a thriving LGBTQIA community, sustaining and sustained by so many welcoming organizations, places of worship, businesses, neighborhoods, schools, events, and more. And whereas, Minneapolis has benefited from the service and talents of numerous LGBTQIA officials on the city council, the park board, the Board of Estimate and Taxation, and in both the Minnesota House and Senate, as well as countless appointed officials and city employees. And whereas, Minneapolis annually hosts, plays host to the Twin Cities LGBT Pride Celebration, the city's largest outdoor festival, in which Loring Park is turned into a forum for celebrating LGBT pride, and those, including allies who work for it. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the mayor and city council hereby declare June 2018 as LGBTQIA Pride Month in the city of Minneapolis, and that the residents and visitors are encouraged to participate in the numerous activities celebrating the LGBT Pride Month in the city and in ongoing work leading Minnesota towards full LGBT equality. Thank you, everybody.
And I just want to thank all of my colleagues on the council for supporting this resolution, and in particular, councilmember Andrew Johnson and his staff, who drafted this resolution. And so, thank you, Councilmember Johnson. Yeah, thank you very much. Would you guys care to say a few words?
My name is Samantha Lambick, and on behalf of the Board of Directors for Twin Cities Pride, we would like to say thank you for your continued support of the LGBTQIA community, and we hope to see you this year at our festival. That's all I got.
Any particular highlights of this year's festival that we should be aware of?
And on this, secrets.
We have Brandy at Pride and Concert.
Brandy!
We have, we have Chelsea Handler, who's gonna be at Town Hall at State Theater the week of Pride. So, I highly recommend grabbing tickets to that. That should be interesting. It's gonna be less of a stand-up comedy show and more of an inclusive town hall format. So, anything else? The family picnic at Como Park Pavilion. So, bring your LGBT families and have a good time there.
Right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Y'all had me at Moesha, so...
Mo.
Able to the public, thank you.
Do we get some photos? I think our staff has it, yeah.
All right. So, I wanted to present that to you. Would you like to do? We have like eight resolutions up here.
There are a lot of resolutions, and that one is not.
It's not the correct one. So, we will get that to you very shortly here. We have a busy day of resolutions. Give us a moment. But thank you all so much. Can we give them another round of applause?
All right. Now they're all mixed up. For real. Okay, here we go. Next, we have Councilmember Fletcher coming, and we are introducing this resolution to support working people and collective bargaining. And I'll turn it over to Councilmember Fletcher to explain why we have to do that still in 2018.
While, while I'm speaking, any of my colleagues would like to help read this resolution. I'd invite you to come on up. We have plenty of wherances for everybody. And anybody who's here representing a union today, please come and join us over here. We'd love to have you up here with us. And thank you to the T21 crowd for wearing AFSME green today. That's terrific. So, as many people have heard, it's not new, but it's unfortunately, it feels like kind of experiencing an upsurgeance that unions are under attack, that we are awaiting a Supreme Court decision that would produce an outrageous result that would be damaging to our city and to our community. And so, we wanted to make a resolution reaffirming our support for our public sector unions, reaffirming our support for our employees. We want every job in the Twin Cities to be a good job, and the jobs that we have the most control over are the jobs right here at the city. And so, we want to start here by making sure that these are good jobs, where workers are respected and paid well, and given the benefits that they deserve and need. And we often thank our employees, and we recognize our employees for the work that they do, but we don't always thank them for being powerful. We don't always thank them for actually being a voice that helps us run the city better. And so, I want to acknowledge how critically important and beneficial it is to our city that our workers have a union, where they can have a powerful voice and help us run the city better. So, thank you. We are here to support you, and we'll go ahead and read the resolution.
And we have a few councilmembers who joined us. I think I'll have it start down with them, and then maybe Councilmember Fletcher can finish us off.
There you go.
So, maybe Councilmember Worsami, you can each read a couple of the wheraz clauses, and then maybe pass it on.
Whereas, it's our belief that all families should have the means to thrive in a safe and healthy communities, and whereas, the city of Minneapolis provides services to all of our residents through the hard work of thousands of our neighbors who work in public service for the city.
Whereas, the working people who make our city run deserve to have good jobs, that they can support families. And whereas, public workers organizing together have been at the forefront of people's struggles for racial, gender, and economic justice throughout our history, from Martin Luther King Jr.'s support of the Memphis sanitation workers before his assassination, to this year's teacher strike in states across the country. And...
Whereas, today, people across the country and in our city still struggle for a high quality of life for their families and other basic freedoms, freedom from racial discrimination, freedom from degradating work conditions, and the freedom to come together in strong unions to improve their place of work. And whereas, the ability to come together in strong unions gives working people, particularly women and people of color, a powerful voice to speak up for themselves, their families, and their communities, and ensures they are treated with dignity and respect at work. And...
Whereas, when people have strong unions, they gain the power in numbers to reduce racial and gender disparities and ensure that they have good jobs for themselves, their families, and all our communities. And whereas, people working collectively in strong unions have won victories like the 40-hour work week, overtime pay, health and safety standards, paid family leave, earned sick and safe time. And...
And whereas, the Minneapolis 2040 goals, as adopted by the Minneapolis City Council, include living wage jobs, reduced disparities, a healthy, sustainable, and diverse economy, a proactive, accessible, and sustainable government, and other goals that are all made more possible through the strength of our city's public worker unions. And whereas, strong unions provide needed research, innovation, and guidance on rules, regulations, safety, and best practices that enable the city of Minneapolis to save money and deliver services more efficiently to taxpayers. And whereas, strong unions provide the city of Minneapolis with confidence that labor peace will be maintained, and the solutions we agree upon with our union partners will be embraced by employees for smooth delivery of services. And whereas, the Supreme Court is considering the case Janus versus AFSME Council 31, which may decide whether those who work in the public service, including thousands of employees of the city of Minneapolis, would be denied the freedom to come together in strong unions that make our communities safe.
that make our communities safe, more equitable, and strong. And whereas an unfavorable decision in this case would undermine the freedom for millions of working people, especially women and communities of color, to join together in strong unions. And whereas on November 17, 2017, the Minneapolis City Council authorized the city attorney to provide an amicus curate brief on behalf of the city in this case in support of the constitutionality of union security provisions that require public employees who decline union membership to pay a fair share fee to cover their pro-rata cost of union representation, excluding the union's political expenditures. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council support the freedom of all city employees to exercise their rights to a voice and dignity on the job by joining together in strong unions. And be it further resolved that the pending decision in the Janus v. AFME Supreme Court case will have a monumental impact on our city residents and that this council urges the court to consider our country's long, proud history of working people organizing together for fairness and justice in the workplace as they make their decision. Would the representatives from AFME Local 9 like to say a couple words?
On behalf of Local 9, Council 5, AFME, council member Fletcher, and to all of the rest of the city council members, Mayor Frye, I sincerely, we sincerely thank you all for your support.
It is our pleasure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Finally, we have council member Kano coming to join me. And this is a resolution recognizing Kelly Doran's donation to support the Minneapolis Police Department's Narcan program. And I'll just turn it right over to you.
Okay. Oh, beautiful. Okay, so you have the full thing. Okay, Buenos dias a todos. Good morning, everyone. Thank you, council president. I want to acknowledge our mayor, Jacob Frye, who has been very active on this very important issue. It feels really good to have our residents' stories heard and his energy be focused on helping us save lives with this opioid crisis that has hit our community so hard. The fact that the mayor has convened a multi-jurisdictional task force to address this issue in which our office is involved, and many community leaders and grass tops and grassroots nonprofit directors are also engaged is really helpful. So I'm glad to be joined here by Mr. Kelly Doran and by representatives of our Minneapolis Police Department. You will be given the microphone after we read the resolution here, so get ready to talk about your efforts on this front. So this is a resolution by the mayor and the city council recognizing Kelly Doran's donation to support the Minneapolis Police Department's Narcan program. Whereas the opioid crisis has impacted communities across the country, including Minneapolis. And whereas, according to the U.S. Drug Enforcement Agency, opioid overdose has become the leading cause of injury-related death in the United States. And whereas Mayor Frye has established a multi-jurisdictional opioid task force that brings together policymakers and staff from the city, Hennepin County, the state of Minnesota, along with 30 community partner organizations, and has committed to developing and implementing a coordinated plan to reduce opioid abuse, dependence, and overdoses in Minneapolis. Whereas the medication Narcan or naloxone is an opioid antagonist used to reverse overdose and is an important tool in preventing opioid overdose-related deaths. Whereas the Minneapolis Fire Department personnel and EMS first responders have carried Narcan since 2016 and have administered the medication to more than 400 patients. Whereas in early 2018, a part of a pilot program, as a part of a pilot program, the Minneapolis Police Department equipped 125 officers with Narcan in the 3rd precinct, focusing on the areas around Little Earth and as a community that has been hard hit by the opioid crisis. And whereas upon hearing about the efforts being made to outfit some officers with Narcan, Mr. Kelly Doran generously stepped up to donate more than $40,000 to provide Narcan training and medication for all 911 response officers. Whereas this gift allows the Minneapolis Police Department to better ensure the health and safety of all residents of Minneapolis. Now, this, I just want to make sure I didn't miss it. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the city council hereby gratefully accept Mr. Doran's generous gift with sincere gratitude to him and his family for their support of this important effort that's going to help to save us lives. Thank you.
This is for you, and we'd love to have you share some words.
Thank you very much. My family, like many families, has been affected by this crisis as well, and so I know firsthand how this can damage a family and the impacts it can have on a family. And so I appreciate the acknowledgement and the recognition, but that's not really my goal. My goal was to hopefully provide additional resources to the Minneapolis Police Department that will save lives and not only save those lives, but hopefully send those lives on a new path of recovery and of being a valuable part of our society. And so that's the goal here, and I'm glad I could help in a small way, and thank you for the recognition. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm Assistant Chief Mike Jolz from the Minneapolis Police Department, and I'm very happy to be here today and to honor Mr. Doran for his contribution. We started a pilot program earlier this year, and we knew the fire department and EMS had been carrying Narcan for quite some time. And it was within the first week of our officers carrying Narcan that we started to hear stories about saves, lives saved. And when you're an officer and you're arriving on calls where someone is down and out and you're counting the seconds, waiting for an ambulance to arrive or the fire truck to arrive, and now you're able to see that you were able to save someone's life right there and then and there. And at times, we've had officers that have witnessed someone go down, and it was too long to wait for EMS to arrive. And it's very stressful even for the officers to deal with those situations. And we know this is a problem that's touching all boundaries of the city of Minneapolis and across this nation. And so this is a very important step for the Minneapolis Police Department to be able to have all of our officers able to administer Narcan at the appropriate time and save lives. So we'd like to give a plaque today to Kelly Doran. In grateful acknowledgement of your donation to the Minneapolis Police Department's Narcan project, your kindness and generosity will save countless lives, and we appreciate it very much.
And I'll just thank so much council member Kano for her extraordinary leadership on this issue, which is so important. So thank you so much. With that, I'll call our official meeting to order. I'm Lisa Bender again. I'm the president of the Minneapolis City Council. I'll call the regular meeting of May 25 to order and ask clerk to please call the roll.
Council member Ellison.
Here.
Goodman.
Present.
Johnson.
Here.
Palmasano.
Present.
Gordon.
Here.
Kano.
Here.
Reich.
Here.
Fletcher.
Present.
Jenkins.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
Worsami.
Present.
Cunningham.
Present.
President Bender.
Here.
There are 13 members present.
Let the record reflect that we have a quorum, and we are also grateful that Mayor Frye took the time to join us this morning for the important honorary resolutions that were read earlier. Our agenda for today is before us. We have a few amendments to bring forward this morning, and we have those at our desks. First, we have the honorary resolution recognizing Kelly Doran for his outfit of all 911 officers with Narcan. Second, we have a notice of intent from council member Johnson related to amendments for signed provisions that we will add under the order of new notice ordinance, the order of notice of ordinance introductions. And third, we have a notice that will adjourn this meeting today to June 7 at 12:30 p.m. for the purpose of acting on the report of the local Board of Appeal and Equalization. Are there any further amendments from council members? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Madam President. There's one.
Council member Gordon.
Thank you very much. I wanted to move to amend the agenda to include under the order of resolutions, a resolution honoring the life of Roda Gilman. And everyone should have that before you.
Thank you. So then, on the amendments, including council member Gordon's, is there a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. That carries, and the agenda is adopted as amended. Next, we have the minutes from our regular meeting of May 11, as well as the minutes from the adjourned meeting of May 24 for acceptance. May I have a motion?
So moved. Madam President. Madam President, I'm so sorry to interrupt again. Clerical errors, the minutes from yesterday's adjourned session are not yet in your packets.
Ah. So we will adopt them at the next regular meeting in the city council. I will amend my proposed motion, which would be to adopt the meeting minutes from our regular meeting of May 11. May I have a motion on that?
So moved.
Second.
All in approval, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That carries, and those minutes are accepted. Finally, we have the referrals of petitions, communications, and reports to proper committees. May I please have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in approval, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That carries, and those referrals are made. The next order of business is reports of our standing committees. The first is our Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee chaired by council member Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing 14 items forward for approval this morning. Item number one is a license for Popple View. Item two is a license for First Tap Room and Kitchen. Item three is a license for Fairgrounds Coffee and Tea. Item four is a license for Edwards Kitchen and Dessert. Item five is a license for Ladana. Item six is a license for The Regime. Item seven is a license for Henry &amp; Sons. Item eight is a license for Grey Fox. Item nine is a license for Botany Coffee. Item 10 is a change in the redevelopment plan at 44th and Penn Avenue North. Item 11 is a license revocation that I believe we're pulling off the agenda because the state taxes have been paid. Item 12 are the regular liquor business and gambling licenses. Item 13 is a license settlement conference. And item 14 is a rental license reinstatement. With that, I'll move all items for approval, including item one, the motion would be to remove from the agenda.
Council member Goodman has moved the report with that change. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Council member Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next is the report of the Housing Policy and Development Committee, given by council member Gordon.
Thank you very much, President Bender. The Housing Policy and Development Committee is bringing forward five items for consideration today. The first is a land sale at 2818th Avenue North. Second is a land sale at 1405 16th Avenue North. The third is a supplemental award and bond issuance for the Hook &amp; Ladder Apartments Project. That's at 2318 Jefferson Street Northeast and also at 6040 24th Avenue Northeast. Fourth item, we got a report from the Heading Home Hennepin, I'm sorry, Heading Home Together. That's Minnesota's state action plan to prevent and end homelessness. And we are authorizing the city to formally sign on as a partner to the plan and also directing our staff to identify specific actions that the city could take consistent with the plan and recommend future actions. The fifth item is approving applications for grant funding for the 2018 Metropolitan Council Livability Communities Demonstration Account and also their transit-oriented development grants. And the sixth item, I guess there's six items, I misspoke when I said five, is establishing a Minneapolis Advisory Committee on Housing. I will move all items forward for approval.
Council member Gordon has moved the HPD committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Council member Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next is the report from our Intergovernmental Relations Committee chaired by council member Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee brings forward today five items. The first is amendments to our legislative agenda and policy positions. The second is a resolution supporting working people and collective bargaining. The third is authorizing the city to join an amicus brief in California's separation statute case. The fourth is a policy supporting relationships between the United States and Cuba. And the fifth is transmitting to the Charter Commission our debt for capital expenditures charter amendment proposal. And I will move all items.
Council member Johnson has moved the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Council member Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to speak to item number four, resolution, building relationships with Cuba. If I may read the resolution of the city of Minneapolis, a resolution of the mayor and city council urging the federal government to continue the policy initiated by past presidents to build a new cooperative relationship between the United States and Cuba. Whereas in 1960, the United States government imposed an economic, commercial, and financial embargo against Cuba. And whereas on December 17, 2014, the United States President Barack Obama and Cuban President Raul Castro agreed to reestablish diplomatic relations between the two countries. And whereas despite executive actions by President Obama easing certain regulations, the U.S. embargo continues to be in place, as are restrictions on travel by United States citizens to Cuba. And whereas trade between the United States and Cuba benefits both countries, particularly in the areas of food production, education, healthcare, tourism, arts, music, biotechnological, and medical research. And whereas an end to the embargo would enable Minneapolis-area enterprises to collaborate with Cuba's advanced biotechnical and medical research institutions in the area of drug development, clinical tests, genetics, and medical devices, thus enhancing economic development and employment opportunities in our region. And whereas on October 6, 2014, the Minnesota International Center Westminster Presbyterian Church and St. Thomas University welcomed Cuban Ambassador Cabanas of the Cuban Special Interest Section, now the Cuban Embassy in Washington, D.C., to Minneapolis. And whereas in September 2017, President Trump ordered all diplomatic staff withdrawn from the U.S. Embassy in Havana and expelled diplomatic staff from the Cuban Embassy in Washington, D.C. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city of Minneapolis, by the city council of the city of Minneapolis, that the city of Minneapolis urges President Trump to renew engagement of negotiations with the Cuban government as initiated by the policy of past presidents to build a new cooperative relationship between the United States and Cuba and reestablish the diplomatic staffing of U.S. Embassy in Havana and reinstatement of the diplomatic staff on the Cuban Embassy in Washington, D.C. Be it further resolved that the city of Minneapolis urges Congress and the president to immediately end all aspects of the United States economic, commercial, and financial embargo against Cuba, including restrictions on travel by Cuba, to Cuba by United States citizens, passed on this day, 25th of May, 2018. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Is there any further discussion on the IGR report?
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next, we have the Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee, and that report will be given by the committee chair, Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. The Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee will be bringing forward seven items this week. The first is the reappointment of the Commissioner of Health, the slash Director of Health Department of a two-year reappointment of Gretchen Music Camp. The second is Tobacco 21 Ordinance, passage of the ordinance amending Title 13, Chapter 281 of the Minneapolis Code of Ordinances related to business licenses and business regulations, tobacco dealers amending provisions to increase the minimum age for sales or provision of tobacco products from 18 to 21. Three, the Day of the Transgender Child. Four, the Minneapolis Advisory Committee on Aging Appointments and Reappointments. Five is Public Health Advisory Commitment Reappointment. Six is the accepting a grant from the Minneapolis Foundation Environmental Legacy Fund in the amount of $20,000 for the Minneapolis Solar Energy Green Business Initiative. And number seven is the Neighborhood 2020s Work Group, approving the work group as, the work group structure as is. I move approval of these items.
Councilmember Cunningham has removed, has moved the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Ellison.
Just wanted to speak to item number two and acknowledge that there is a lot of support in the room here for the passage of T-21. I want to thank Andrew Johnson for, you know, as a new council member, it can be kind of scary to kind of jump in and figure out how do you pass an ordinance and do all that. And Councilmember Johnson knew I had an interest in this topic and invited me to co-author this, this, this ordinance with him. So I want to thank the advocates in the room for really pushing for this. And I'm happy that Minneapolis is going to be joining a regional effort with a lot of our suburban partners to, to make this happen. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam President. I also would like to speak to, to number two, just to thank both authors, that this is the most important thing we do as a city, is look out for the health of our citizens. And this is an amazing step forward. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I wanted to thank my co-author for the work on this. Thank everyone for showing up as well, wearing the green today. The advocates have been absolutely amazing and have really driven this change across the state in so many cities. I want to thank our Health Department staff as well, and the other cities that have passed this. You know, Minneapolis loves to lead on issues, but in this case, we've seen a lot of our suburban and ex-urban partners leading on this. And we're proud to join them and proud of their leadership, and we hope that the state will pass Tobacco 21. This is a policy that we know at a state level would, over 15 years, prevent 30,000 youth from starting to smoke. And when 2/3 of smokers end up dying early, that's a lot of lives that are impacted. So I want to be brief. I don't want to go through all the points I made at committee, but I do want to recognize, you know, somebody stepped up and said that this was an emotional issue. And it's a common sense policy. It's a common sense policy that we know is going to reduce access to tobacco products for young individuals. It's not intended to make it impossible for them to access, but it is intended to make it a lot harder. And we know that that is going to impact a lot of lives. But it is also emotional, because so many of us, virtually everyone in this room, I'm sure, knows somebody that has either died unnecessarily young, or has been struggling with disease or addiction because of tobacco products. Well, I have individuals in my life that I'm thinking of today, because we're about to vote on this. And I'm sure all of you have those individuals, and I'd ask that you hold them in your thoughts today as well, and that we take this positive energy forward and see this change happen across the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And not to completely belabor this point, but, and so I echo all the comments that my, my colleagues have indicated, and just would add that this is really a step forward in equity. We, we know that communities of color, young people are extremely targeted by big tobacco. And so this is a symbol of resistance to that onslaught. And so I want to thank my colleagues, I want to thank all the advocates for your extraordinary efforts in, in helping to pass this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to take a moment to say that for number two, that I will be voting in support of it today. And my vote yes is on behalf of my 15-year-old self. I am that poster child that everybody always talks about. I'm LGBT, black. At the time, when I started smoking, I was a girl. I, there was a lot of intentionality around targeting cigarettes towards me. And, and so I started smoking at 15, and it is something that I have now struggled with for over half of my life, and off and on. And so when I vote in favor of this today, I vote on behalf of my 16-year-old, 15, 16-year-old self, because I can tell you that if I had been 15 or 16, and I would have known I had to wait till 21, I'd have been like, I'm good. Too much work. So I am voting on that, on behalf of my 16-year-old self. Thank you, everybody, for fighting this fight. It's very challenging, because we are at the forefront. We aren't the first, but we are at the forefront of public health policy around tobacco. And so thank you all for being audacious, pushing policymakers to be audacious, and to enter this conversation and shape it. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Worsami.
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to thank the authors and all the activists, especially these folks here who've been very patiently, you know, waiting for this moment. So thank you very much. And we also have a park board commissioner that I want to recognize as well, who's been active and very, a leader in this, in this initiative. So thank you very much, everyone.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I haven't said too much about this issue of late, and I just want to also share a personal story and thank the authors for bringing this forward. We've had a lot of different efforts in front of us with regard to smoking cessation, but I don't think there is one that is more important than the one that we're passing today. This weekend, I'm going to go home to visit my mother, who is 75-year-old, is 75 years old and suffers from COPD. She is on oxygen full-time, and what used to be a very vibrant woman who played tennis and got out a lot, is pretty much now confined to being able to go out one time a day. Why is this? Because at age 12, in the 1950s, she smoked two packs of Marlboro Reds cigarettes a day, and did that every day for the next 50-some-odd years. It wasn't until she was put on oxygen that she quit smoking. And she tried. I remember as a child, one of the methods she tried was using a giant jar of used cigarettes that was mixed with water that they told us to stick in our house as a reminder of how bad cigarettes were. But gum, and patches, and knowingly having to fight disease in the future was not enough. Tobacco is an addiction, and it takes a lot to be able to beat it. Not starting in the first place is what would have lengthened my mother's life. And so I really am proud of the people on the council who have brought this forward. I also share a very personal connection to the issue, and I do think that in the end, the youth in our community, hearing stories like the ones they heard on the dais today, will know that your advocacy is something that matters and makes a difference. And when I go home for this week, I will be able to tell my mom that I did something that might have prevented her from being on oxygen for the rest of her life. Thank you.
Thank you. Does there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll just thank again so much the youth in particular that have gotten so involved in this issue over many years. You know, first, we started talking about flavored tobacco, and then we talked about adding menthol, which we had left out. And now we're here back again, and your efforts over these many years have been, made a huge difference in our city, a really huge difference. And we hope you will keep imagining what we can do better to serve you as your city council in the future. We hope to see you back. We know you've been working so hard, so maybe you want to take a little break first. But if you don't, we will welcome you anytime. And so Park Board Commissioner Leticia Vitale, your leadership, along with so many of the other grownups who are here to support our youth, is really extraordinary. I don't think there is any stronger youth-centered advocacy in our city that really empowers and lifts up youth voices. And we notice it, and we really are grateful for it. So thank you. With that, clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Thank you. Thank you. It is important to celebrate hard work. All right. Next, we have the Public Safety Emergency Management Committee report, and that will be given by the Chair, Councilmember Conno.
Thank you, Madam President. So for our committee, we have five items that are being brought forward. The first one is a gift acceptance from Kelly Dorian to supply Minneapolis 911 response officers with Narcan. Second item is an MOU with Summit Academy regarding cooperation in addressing campus sexual assaults. Number three is a contract with the U of M Veterinary Medical Center for Police K-9 Health Services. Number four is a contract amendment with SMG to correct the hourly rate for 911 dispatchers. And the final item is a contract amendment with Hennepin County regarding the Hennepin County Jail. And those are, items are being brought forward by our committee.
Thank you. Councilmember Conno has moved the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next, we have the Report of the Transportation and Public Works Committee, given by the Chair, Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee forwards 15 items today. Item one is the 2018 Concrete Streets Rehabilitation Project Approval and Assessment. Item two is the 37th Avenue Northeast Reservicing Project Approval and Assessment. Item three is the 28th Avenue South Street Reconstruction Project Designation and Setting the Public Hearing for July 10th, 2018. Item four is the Joint Powers Agreement with the City of Columbia Heights for the 37th Avenue Reservicing Project. Item five is a contract amendment with Rice Lake Construction Group for Fugary Softening Plant Recarbonation Improvements. Item six is a contract amendment with the Alliance Engineering Incorporated for additional professional services for the 8th Street, Street Reconstruction Project. Item seven is a contract amendment with Bolton &amp; Menk Incorporated for additional professional services at the 4th Street Reconstruction Project. Item eight is the grant from the State of Minnesota for the renovation of PV Plaza. Item nine is the Sewer Service Line Repair Assessment Cancellation for the 1915 Talmage Avenue Southeast. Item 10 is the Railroad Agreement with Minnesota Commercial Railway Mid-City Industrial Reconstruction Project. Item 11 is the D-line Rapid Transit Recommended Station Plan. These are the City of Minneapolis comments. Item 12 is the bid of the 14th Avenue Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project. Item 13 is the bid for the 2018 Municipal Squad Car Upfeeding Kits. Item 14 is the 2018 Public Works Week, where we celebrate the work of all our fine staff, and we had a nice resolution in committee. Item 15 is the Pedestrian and Bicycle Winter Maintenance Study. A lot of conversation was had in committee as well. Madam President, I move all items as amended.
Councilmember Reich has moved the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next, we have the Report of our Zoning and Planning Committee, presented by the Chair, Councilmember Schrader. And I just want to say, we have two very special guests for this particular report, Peter and Julian Schrader. Thank you for coming today.
Thank you, Madam President. With a lot of added pressure from the audience today. The zoning and planning committee will, is, has five items today. The first is the granting of a variance appeal at 1800 4th Street Northeast. The second is the denying of an appeal for 3612, 3613 Bryant Avenue South. Third is the denial of an appeal at, actually, I'll be pulling three and four off of the agenda. Item number six is a one-time funds transfer from the City Coordinator's Office to the Community Planning and Economic Development Department for Energy Technical Assistance Program, or ETAP. Item number seven is an Energy and Regulatory Policy Staff Position Grant Application. Item number eight is a contract amendment with Industrial Hygiene Services Corporation for general hygiene and testing services. Item number nine is a contract with Professional Service Industries, Inc., for vibration monitoring services for the Public Service Building Project, or formerly referred to as the Consolidated Office Building Project. And item number 10 is an amendment to the Joint Powers Agreement with the Minnesota Department of Public Safety Bureau of Criminal Apprehension for participation of the state's Human Trafficking Task Force, and I move approval of all 10 items.
Councilmember Worsami has moved the Ways and Means Report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Finally, we have the Report of our Zoning and Planning Committee, presented by the Chair, Councilmember Schrader. And I just want to say we have two very special guests for this particular report, who are Peter and Julian Schrader. Thank you for coming today.
Thank you, Madam President. There was a lot of added pressure from the audience today. The Zoning and Planning Committee will, is, has five items today. The first is the granting of a variance appeal at 1804th Street Northeast. The second is the denying of a appeal for 3612, 3613 Bryant Avenue South. Third is the denial of an appeal at, actually, I'll be pulling three and four off of the agenda. And our fifth item that we'll be bringing forward is a vacation resolution for 2526 Emerson Avenue South, and I'll move number one, two, and five.
Councilmember Schrader has moved items one, two, and five from the committee report. Is there any discussion on those items? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Pardon me, Mr. Clerk, I'm sorry. Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to just speak to the, uh, related appeals to Minnehaha Academy. I just, oh, sorry.
We'll be, no. Again, we'll be talking about those.
All right, thank you. Sorry about that.
Oh, no problem. So, this is.
I'll wait, I'll wait for that.
Okay. So, we're on items one, two, and five.
Are you ready, Madam President?
Yes. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and those items are adopted. And that brings us back to items three and four, and these are both related to the Minnehaha Academy proposal. And we'll go to Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you. I'm not sure if they've been moved yet or not, so I wanted to amend the committee's recommendation. So, and I would like the council to consider my amendments. I have amendment to vote to number three and number four.
We can just accept it as a motion.
All right.
As an amended motion.
And maybe I'll talk about, I, I could talk about all three of them if that would be appropriate. I know when we heard it in committee, it was all one hearing. So, I'll, I'll explain all three of them, and then we can decide the best way to deal with it. The first two motions have to do with the conditional use permit for a K-12 school. And these are adding, it's adding or amending conditions that were already passed by the committee or the, and some of them by the Planning Commission before that in response to more concerns that were raised and things were brought in. In fact, I'm sure everybody got a letter from the Office of the State Archaeologist talking about possible archaeological resources at the site. So, the first condition that I would like to add concerns that. And it says the following. The applicant shall consult with the Office of the State Archaeologist and the Minnesota Historic Preservation Office prior to construction or earthmoving to determine any protocols related to the potential discovery of unrecorded cemetery sites or other archaeological resources that may be found at the site. Then I also want to make an amendment to one of the conditions that was already present. We had a lot of input from folks asking about putting more emphasis on oak trees and the oak savanna that was there. So, you can see before you, if you're looking at this, I underlined the additional phrase that I was putting into condition number four, which says with an emphasis on oak trees. Just for those who would prefer it, I'll read the entire condition now, and you'll hear that in the middle of it. The applicant shall provide a minimum of 143 canopy trees on the site with an emphasis on oak trees, including one additional canopy tree at the north end of the west parking lot. The applicant shall provide not less than one shrub for every 100 square feet of required landscape yard or 711 shrubs on the site. So, that's just amending that condition. And then, because there were two appeals, there's also a ZMP number four. And that has to do with a different appeal on a different end of the property having to do with access to and from the property on 47th Avenue. And I appreciate the patience of my colleagues as we get into the weeds on this project. But after the condition was passed at committee, there was a site visit that included public work staff and, and the appellant and others to look at really what could be done there to address an error originally where we thought the property line was and where we thought street vacations had already happened. And so, we had to, had to add, or we want to add, I'm moving to add some language to that condition to make it clearer. That's also underlined before you. I'll, I guess I'll read the whole condition, and I'll, I'll note when the, the added part comes. This is condition number three and it's amendment to it, and it says as follows. Parking and loading areas for the K-12 schools shall be accessed from 32nd Street East and shall not be accessed from or have access to 47th Avenue South. And now, I'm adding, the applicant shall work with CPED staff and the appellant to determine the type and location of a burial, barrier that will prevent access to the parking and loading areas for the K-12 school from 47th Avenue South. A landscaped barrier is preferred. The applicant may apply for either an encroachment permit or a partial vacation of 47th Avenue South to facilitate placement of the barrier north of the loading area. But if no encroachment permit or vacation is approved, the barrier may not be placed within the 47th Avenue South right-of-way. And then it goes on to read, the Northwest Conference Center may continue to be accessed from 47th Avenue South, but there may be no internal circulation between the Conference Center parking lot and the K-12 school parking lot. I'm happy to answer any questions or talk further about this. I'll just note that this is a, a big project. This, it was necessitated by a tragedy that occurred in the ward when there was an explosion at the school. We had a lengthy public hearing and a discussion about this, and I appreciate my colleagues and staffs and community members and the, the school for working so, so closely to try to get us to the point we're at today.
Thank you. So, Councilmember Gordon has moved items three and four from the ZMP agenda, including the three items that are amended in the conditions of approval on those two items, which are before all of us. Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Minnehaha Academy is not in Ward 12, but we share the community greater longfellow, and it's certainly been a place that Councilmember Gordon and I have spent a lot of time and a, really a center, one of the centers of the community. And I don't think it's any surprise to people that such a, a great school is, is so, people are so passionate about such a great school and also are one-of-a-kind national treasure, the River Gorge. And on this issue, I don't think I've received more emails and phone calls about any sort of zoning matter before us. I think it just goes to show you how active and engaged our community is. And I really, really want to commend Councilmember Gordon for his leadership on this, because it is, it has been such a significant issue in the community, and he has worked very hard on compromise. And I support these conditions and can't say enough about his work to bring folks together and try to get something here. It really, you know, advances the interests of both parties. So, thank you, Councilmember Gordon, for your leadership.
Thank you. Councilmember Schrader.
I also wanted to thank and also commend Councilmember Gordon for all of the work that he's done with neighbors, with the community, with the school, and I'll be supporting these three motions.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on zoning and planning items three and four? Seeing none, I'll just echo again, as I did in committee, how much we all appreciate Councilmember Gordon's hard work on this and that of his office. I know you spent many hours talking with community members and, and folks who love their community at homes and just want to make sure that this expansion is handled well and your attention to detail is appreciated. And I just also wanted to say again how much we're excited to see the school rebuilding, and we have, you've been in our thoughts ever since the terrible tragedy that happened, and we're so glad to welcome you and your students back into an amazing new building. Thank you. That, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. That gives us just a couple more items on our agenda. One is the Notice of Ordinance Introductions. We have one Notice of Intent this morning, which was added as amendment at the beginning of the meeting. This is a notice from Councilmember Johnson related to the subject matter of an ordinance to amend the zoning code related to overlay districts to amend existing sign provisions. No action is required, and that notice is given. We have two items on the introduction and referral calendar today. The first is a motion by Councilmember Schrader pursuant to notice to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code related to mobile food stores for first reading and referral to the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee. The second is a motion by myself to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to the housing improvement areas to add a new Article III entitled Condos on Blaisdell to establish the area and impose fees to pay for housing improvements within the area. This matter will be referred to the Housing Policy and Development Committee. This introduction is presented without prior notice and therefore requires unanimous consent. Are there any questions from councilmembers on either of the items or discussion?